I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, um, item number two is to consider an act upon the minutes from the meeting held on March third. I emailed them all out to everybody. Pam, thanks for the map. That was a nice touch.
Thank you.
So.
I aim to please. If not at home, at least I could do that here. My boys don't think so.
So, I will entertain a motion for the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Karen Ackerman, second?
I will second Karen McCormick.
Karen McCormick. Um, any discussion, any changes to the minutes as they've been presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it's unanimous. Okay, so for the benefit of our audience who we now have with us, I thought maybe we'd just give them a little recap of what we did at the last meeting. Um, Matt, you have the, alright, so up on the screen are, um, seven. Uh, the committee decided, uh, at the first meeting that we were gonna go with ten districts. At least that was gonna be our starting point to see how things done. Um, so we have now drawn, uh, seven of the ten districts. And that map is up there so everybody can see. Um, and we've only, and they all have letter assignments. Um, up on the board what everybody is looking at, the white area is still the, uh, last, um, state representative district that we still need to split into three additional districts for the RTM. Um, and again, as everybody's aware, we need to be ten percent low to high. Um, and the printouts that I gave you with all seven districts on it, um, Matt was, Matt was nice enough to give us, um, the counts on those.
Can you explain ten percent low to high, what that means for our audience?
Matt, you wanna give us a ten percent low to high explanation, 'cause you can probably do it better than I could?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put up the, the districts that we have so far as a little spreadsheet, 'cause I think if, if those last step, you're gonna put your numbers in, uh, and see how far apart you are. So, um, when you divide up these districts, uh, you need to have them be close to the same size. Our charter says ten percent is the maximum deviation from the largest to the smallest. Uh, so as you can see here, of the seven districts we've drawn so far, the largest is what, what's labeled as District E, which is six thousand two hundred fifty-six. The smallest is District B, which is five thousand six hundred eighty. And those two numbers are nine point two one percent apart. Uh, so when you divide up the one thirty-third, um, I think you're, you're gonna find that, um, you know, if you were to divide the one thirty-third perfectly, you have three districts of six thousand three hundred forty-two apiece. Um, and you're, that's gonna be a little over ten percent in total. Uh, so you're gonna have, um, District B of the smallest of the districts in the one thirty-fourth is gonna have to take a few people from, uh, A and C, uh, just to make those a little bit closer together. Um, but you'll, you'll see as you go through, um, sort of what numbers you end up with. Uh, I'll just say, when you're dividing up the one thirty-third, the closer together the, the population numbers are, the less change you'll need to make to what you did to the one thirty-fourth previously. So.
Can you say that again?
The closer to exactly equal size you make the three districts that you draw within the one thirty-third, the less change you'll need to make to the one thirty-fourth to bring it to within that ten percent range. You'll, you'll see that though when we get to that, that point.
Okay, so I guess the first order of business then would be to start drawing lines in the one, I never remember which one it is. What is it? One thirty-three?
One thirty-three.
So. Does anybody wanna go with the first line? If not, I'll go.
On the one thirty-third?
Mm-hmm. We need to split it into three.
Um, alright, well, why don't you just start with Fairfield Woods Road? Well, you're more familiar with that neighborhood. If you have something you want, then.
Uh, me, well.
I'm open to ideas.
Matt, can you, Matt, can you bring it up? So, 'cause.
Yeah, we got it.
Um. 'Cause I do believe it is Fairfield Woods Road that I have, right?
Well, that's a major line.
Right, and that was my thought, was to split the district in half, so.
So Fairfield Woods and then Wilson, uh, out to the Bridgeport border?
Yeah.
From.
Why don't you start with that?
Yep. Alright, so, uh, and I guess I'll narrate this just for the sake of people watching. Um, you know, you can see these areas that, uh, how identified, selected with sort of the red dots. Over on the far right side, you see, um, the number of people. Uh, pop, uh, total population is the top row, five thousand one hundred eighty-seven.
That's the whole one thirty?
That is the area of the one, uh, thirty-third that you identified, so five, one, eight, seven is that number. Uh, we're looking for sixty-three, forty-two in total.
Sixty-three, forty-two, for each one?
For each of the three.
If you were to do them even, okay.
So what do we have now?
So we have to go lower.
We need, we need about twelve hundred more people.
You need how many?
About twelve hundred more.
How about if we went down, um, I can't tell what that road is on this map.
Do we have a one thirty-third with the census numbers like this by any chance, like this size?
Uh, the yellow is the one thirty-third.
No, no, I know, but that has a census box on it.
Oh, uh, this large map has the census numbers on it.
Oh, okay.
How about if you go down from Fairfield Woods Road to Toilsome Hill and then go over? How much does that add?
Yeah, that's, that.
So you wanna go, uh, like with Stratfield as the dividing line?
Is that what it is? Like, it's not marked on this map. I think that is right. It goes down, um, oh, yeah, 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 it probably is Stratfield Road. It goes past a river and then.
Churchill.
Is it Churchill?
Churchill and Stratfield meet, uh, about three blocks down from what's now the border.
Right, so it is Stratfield it would be.
How many do we need, Matt? A thousand?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred?
So we need to add twelve hundred?
Yeah.
Um, alright, let me ask this question, 'cause we didn't talk about that last time. Just, 'cause this is something that will come into play. Of what we drew right now, where would they vote? Is something in there?
Uh, um, there's definitely, uh, schools in every one of the areas.
So, so North Stratfield's in there?
Uh, North Stratfield is right.
Okay, alright, 'cause that, that was gonna make a determining factor on which street I decided to drop down.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have another one of those, Hal, with the, with the census thing?
Uh, I don't think I brought any. I just brought the ones that I had. I didn't.
I can grab some from the office if you want. Those were the sketch maps.
Yeah, would you, would you mind?
Great. Might make your job a little easier possibly.
Yeah, definitely.
Thanks.
Oh, they're probably.
We need to add.
Uh, but again, they are also on here if you want them, and I also.
Yeah. Yeah, and then out, down Wilson, so it's a matter of where, who, where you wanna drop down.
Thank you.
Do you wanna drop down to Jackman Avenue? That's a good cut. That's a double yellow line.
So going out this way, right?
So you would go out here.
Mm-hmm.
And then you would, let's see how many we get in if we drop down. So you would come out here and then you would drop down to Jackman.
And go all the way across back into the border.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And see what that gives you.
I can't read the street. My eyes are all bugging out.
Yeah.
That's why I have a magnifier in my phone so I can make this stuff bigger.
Do you wanna move this over a little and it's quicker to you too?
The best app I ever downloaded.
Which one, the magnifier?
Yes, the woods and then down.
Stratfield or Jackman.
Yeah.
Jackman is.
It's Edgewood and then it becomes Jackman.
Right.
Um. That's a very tight, I know that neighborhood really well. It's a very tight neighborhood, but.
Yeah, that's over by the, uh, Volunteer Firehouse.
Yeah.
That's exactly where that is.
I have a good friend over there. Um.
That might just be enough numbers too, based on what we're looking for.
Yeah.
I think anyway you split that area is gonna be a problem.
Yeah, because it's so tight to go through. Yeah, it is.
Well, the same school district, so you're not gonna wanna vote in another one, but only so much you can do.
Somebody at work was asking me how it was going and he was mainly like, well, I have to vote in a different place. I think that's really what most people are gonna be confused by.
Understood.
But it won't, it will have to happen sometimes, yeah.
No?
Hi, Steve.
Hi. But if you'd like to be on the recording, you'd have to go there 'cause the camera's up on top of the door over here.
You mean seen by the public?
Mm-hmm.
I'd rather be over here. How do I look?
Yeah, look, that's gonna be enough extra.
I don't know if it is either. That's why I thought we'd start there and then we could just start going south.
Right, 'cause you're going back Toilsome Hill all the way down to Jackman, right?
Yeah.
Hmm.
You might have to drop all the way to the border.
To that point, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you sitting here, huh?
No, I'm sitting right there. So you mean coming down all the way to here?
Thank you.
Yeah, we might have to. I don't know. Let's see what that first cut does.
Matt, can you bring it down to Jackman?
Uh, yeah, just on the east side of the Stratfield Road, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if those guys want that.
No, I have them texted.
Okay, we didn't know if they wanted to phone us. What is going to Jackman get us?
I got the magnifier.
Did you?
Yeah, it's a great thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is it us called magnifier?
Yeah, literally called magnifier.
It's not on it that you have to get the app?
It's just an app, yeah.
Okay.
But I had it and I don't remember downloading it, so just search your app.
I need that. You know what I need that for? Restaurant menu. Yeah.
Let's get some of your stuff out these days.
Yeah, and a floodlight.
Yeah.
We went to that new, um, Echo Restaurant in Trumbull where Marissa's used to be.
How is, oh, how is that?
Delicious.
Really? What kind of food is it?
Italian food.
Oh, nice.
Very nice.
Oh, wait, somebody owns that. Who owns that?
The guys who own Malta, same owners. Called Echo. Very nice.
E-C-C-O?
They died a long time ago.
Not really. I haven't been here in a long time.
Yeah, really long time. They redid the whole plaza.
Oh, wow. The ring's up to sixty-seven, eighty. You got five hundred too many now.
Oh, see, 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 guys, see? Alright, what's that?
Four hundred too many.
What's that north, what?
Four hundred.
Oh, that'll be too much.
So what's the block, what's the one block up here?
Toilsome Hill?
Toilsome Hill.
That's four thirty-two.
So where does that leave us? I can, sorry, I can't.
Close.
Yeah.
That's gonna be very close, right?
Do you know what the password is here? I do.
Sixty-three, forty-eight.
Thank you.
We're looking for sixty-three, forty-two.
Oh, there you go.
Wow, that's great.
Alright, that's good. Okay. Alright, sixty.
So that's good. So now we need to split the other one in half, right? So what do we have left, Matt? Twelve and change?
Oh, thank you.
Somebody just shared their Wi-Fi password with me from their home, but thank you to whoever did that.
That's what I'm looking for.
Twelve sixty.
Did you get it too?
Um, no.
Alright, so.
Oh, I'm not even connected myself.
So can you show us that whole area? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I guess I am here. Thank you to whoever shared it.
So the purple.
So now you need step two.
The purple's what we did, right, Matt? That light purple at the top? Okay.
New York reverse.
Okay, so now we go just so Fairfield Woods and then dropped it, right, and then down north.
Toilsome Hill.
To this one?
Yep.
Okay, so that's one.
Maybe is that Napps Highway, maybe down Melville and then over Napps. No, it wouldn't be.
Or we could start with some area and we can tell you, I'll tell you how many.
What, what happens if you go all the way down to Tuxass Hill Cut Off and just taking this whole thing? It's probably way too much.
Figure out which one's the cutoff here.
Hmm.
What street are you going down?
I'm going down the Tuxass Hill Cut Off.
From what street?
Oh. From Fairfield Woods.
On Melville?
Yeah, because we're, this was the dividing line, right? So it would be all this and here. Oh, I'm sorry, down what road here?
Yeah, I guess it has to be that one.
That has to be whatever that is. What is that? Nor, North Str- uh, what is that? Stratfield Road?
Are we, are we chopping down the middle or are we just taking the whole area east to west?
I think we're doing east to west.
I'm taking this, this whole, what happens if you take this whole circle, Matt?
Oh, so you're doing east to west.
Oh, that's what I'm doing.
Well, so, uh, you're not.
Not too many.
You're not taking that area that's on the other side of, uh?
Oh, I forgot we have to, we didn't, we.
Yeah, the gray line, where we go with the district, which is there for your reference, but.
How about if you, you just go down Melville all the way to like, whatever, maybe over to Greenfield Street and then down? I'm trying to, you know, cut it vertically. Let's see.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Like, take, like, go like this?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, alright, yeah, that makes sense.
My fourth population.
Cut it, cut it all the way down Melville, Matt.
To Villa?
Down to Villa.
And then.
Maybe down Lewis or?
I'm, I'm doing something different than what you're saying.
Oh.
Let me look at this.
Okay.
So you want like the east side of Melville to be in one district and the west side to be in the other, correct?
Yeah, mhm.
Looks like it'll be too light on the right, on the east, but we'll see.
But then we could start pulling those neighborhoods in.
Yeah.
You have to go all the way to Bridgeport there.
Mm-hmm.
So Matt, you have to take it all the way to the border too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that is a great app. Oh, my gosh. Thank you for that tip. Wow. My light has just changed.
Yeah, when you turn the light on, it's even better.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Alright, so that's twenty-eight, oh, seven.
On the right, probably.
On the right inside, yeah. Thirty-three, five hundred more?
No, we need.
Yeah, that's not right.
Twenty-eight, oh, seven?
We need about three, we need about thirty-one hundred, right? I need about twice that area, a little more than that.
Okay.
So we need more?
Yeah.
That's about half of what you need.
How about going, um, let's see, turning right on, what is that? What the heck is that street?
You mean left?
Left.
Well, I meant right, the right-hand side is what's short, is that right?
Yeah, so we have to.
The gray area is.
You have to go.
I'm drawing, I'm driving downtown in my mind, so.
Oh, you're right, left.
Um, and it starts with a B.
Down Napps Highway?
Um, down Melville and then over.
Yep, down Melville and then I think you have to go down Napps.
Yeah, you're right. I think Napps would be.
But I'm not familiar with any of the geography over here, so I don't know what I'm cutting on.
Well, if you're gonna go Napps, you gotta go Napps all the way to Tuxass Hill Cut Off.
Okay.
And then bring it back around on Tuxass Hill Cut Off, so we keep that.
Still cutting some of the neighborhood, huh?
Yeah, so if you go around Napps and then just wind it back in, Matt, all the way to the, right to there, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
This keeps fucking like the wrong layer, which is not very smart. Excuse me for a moment here while I do that again.
Yeah, Matt, don't you have anybody else who could do that?
That way it keeps that whole, that whole neighborhood intact.
Yeah.
Actually, that's what the people who live there would say, but, you know.
That's not what they would say, yeah, because it's.
Some of them live on the border.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, that's twenty-three hundred in that area.
So how many do we have?
Are we, um, adding that to the other area?
Yeah, if you add both of them together, 'cause if we gotta take some away, then there's the perfect border, just.
You're fifty-one, nineteen. You know there are twelve hundred.
Holy cow.
We gotta add it back up north then.
Oh, part of the market, uh.
No, no, you can't, don't, 'cause you were so good there.
Part of what's misleading is that like, you know, there's like a golf course in the area, so you've got like this huge space with like no people.
Hmm, um, what's the, what is this road here?
What about if you cut down Tuxass Hill over to Old Stratfield and over?
Uh.
I thought we already took that. Didn't we already take that?
Down by, um.
Matt, can you raise that map up a little bit? The one that's on your screen?
Raise it up when you wanna see.
I wanna see further south, right.
How in the world are we gonna have six thousand people still left down in this little tiny corner?
'Cause the populations are very dense in there.
Hmm. What, what's this road if we do go down here?
The one along the border?
Oh, maybe we should just take this.
That's what I was thinking. But, but we're gonna.
Well, there's four hundred and one people in here, whatever the heck that is.
Matt, what happens if you close in that whole top left-hand corner?
Uh, close in meaning that area right there.
Yeah, 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 right there, that whole thing, yep.
If you just, what is that, where's the, what's that board, at the bottom of that, what's that, is that Napps Highway?
Down near Tuxass Hill?
Tuxass Hill. What happens if you just?
Yeah, take, take all that north, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that would be, well, that will go over quite a lot, but I'll do it academically.
Hmm.
That's, uh, twenty-five hundred.
So what's our total?
Uh, if I were to add it, uh, um, twenty-five hundred, uh.
What's the nu- what's the number that you have now? Fifty what?
One.
Okay.
Uh, seventy-six, ninety-five.
So a thousand over fifteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred over, yeah.
On the right of the pink area, is that Bridgeport or is that still part of this district?
Um, so there is no, no block, Bridgeport blocks that we could accidentally pick up. Um, I had a couple of the border streets that are sort of drawn on here, but.
Okay, but they're not, we don't have to capture them since those are not, okay.
Can you make that a little bit bigger? Okay.
Yeah, can you enlarge that?
Were, were we zooming in on the area that's selected or?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the new, the new one we just did.
There.
And how many do we need to lose? A thousand?
Yeah, or thirteen hundred.
Alright, what if you take just that? Um.
Yeah, I, I shoot.
You would feel like in the side of the V?
'Cause I think if we do, so if we did right up. So if we came right up here, right back down here.
Hot in here.
Yeah, it is very.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I think, Hal.
That's, uh, nineteen seventeen.
How, how much do we have to take out on the mark?
Thirteen hundred.
So we gotta put six hundred back now, right?
Look, these, these two blocks were about three hundred.
So.
That's five, twenty-four? Uh, let's, we'll pull that J for now here. Boy, we didn't wanna make, we wanted to get rid of this other, I'm sorry, I did the wrong thing here. You wanted to get rid, you wanted to throw this other area to a different district, not the one that's purple now.
I think all the streets, right, that are sort of in one neighborhood, or, I don't know what Hal was pointing to.
Yeah, just they took all the way down to the border. That's not enough, right?
So you want this area taken out?
Correct.
We're going up to Melville?
Yep.
That's a thousand, thousand eighty-five. At six, six, one, oh, we need to.
How about just to the?
Get another two seventy.
Three hundred out, right?
What about the two, some of the ones just to the right?
The top, the top point, the top triangle out, right? I don't know what the, the numbers are on there, but.
That's two thirty.
Close.
So that's three thirty-four.
Well, can I just ask a dumb question? How come we're not taking that section south of there? Like, why are we going in the middle of the district?
You have to do.
That's what, that's what I asked.
'Cause it, 'cause it kind of goes with the neighborhood just below it, right?
Right, exactly, 'cause it goes with all of those people in that, that, around that, that whole section kinda stays together.
I know, but when it stay together in the, if you.
I don't know if we have those kind of numbers, 'cause the only other thing I was thinking is we take it off of the, the Bridgeport border.
Yeah, 'cause that's where I would've gone, to keep it on the edges.
Okay, so can you erase that and can we come back?
What are we doing?
Erase your purple.
Well, I mean, right now, uh, so you just want me to add it back in?
Yeah, just add it back in just for now.
Right, 'cause I don't like the way that goes up in the middle.
I mean, I could be wrong.
And then take the whole.
And then Hal, take it from that.
The west side.
Yeah, and go in.
Here.
From the wa- I'll call it the water, even though it's not water.
From here to here.
So this is seventy-six, ninety-five, and we are trying to drop it thirteen fifty.
Hmm.
The thirteen fifty is the number we're looking for. Um, so you just want to fill up and then up here, or?
Like, fill it to whatever that road is. I don't know what that road is. Oh, you know what I'm talking about?
I think so. Is he drawing it now, right, that section there?
Yeah, 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 that way, and then, and, and then build in.
Um, and you wanna take from the bottom too, or you wanna go off like Brooklyn?
Keep going up that way.
'Cause the next block is this enormous one, and you have to take the whole thing, right?
Where's that?
In this area is like one.
How big is that area?
That brings us, that's nine, nine, oh, eight, and then this area is now.
Is that better, though?
We could drop back down, if we take that whole area, right, to the Bridgeport border.
You're concerned about how it looks kind of, I don't.
I just kinda thought, I was like, why are we chopping from the middle? Why don't we just grab it?
Yeah.
Golf course and grass near kind of.
But I, I, I have no concept of what that literally looks like. I don't know that neighborhood. I have no idea what it, it is. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't know the one on the right. I think I.
That's, that's Brooklyn.
Brooklyn. It's like the golf course people.
Brooklyn, that's exactly, it's Brooklyn.
Oh, that's why that's so big.
Right, 'cause it's the, so how many do we have there?
That's ele- eleven, twenty-one.
And.
You need two hundred more. I think I would suggest going back, though, to that.
No, 'cause I, now how much is it? When you added those three?
Twelve eighty-three. So that's pretty close. You're about seventy off now, but.
Seventy off which way?
Uh, you need seventy more.
What's that little swing down into that little thing down there?
That little corner?
That little teeny tiny corner.
Yeah, make him a little bigger. Yeah, make him a little bigger, the, the left hand side, make him a little bigger.
Right there, yeah.
There you go.
That's it, right there.
Uh, okay, so that would be. Six-four-five-nine, and you're looking for sixty-three forty-two, so you gotta-
What do we have left?
Let me ask a question.
We have a hundred too many.
What was the number when we went up into that little neighborhood, that then people said, turn around, was that getting close?
Yeah, that was really, it was forty off.
We're only forty off now, right?
A hundred off now.
Alright, and what's left on the bottom, the last district? Right, cause we have two districts now, correct, of the three?
Yeah, and then could we just see what it looks like?
So, right now, that's forty-eight sixty-one.
So, we need to add.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, but we would be adding the purple as well, for that, right, so you would have a district that would go, uh, from like Grassmere here to the, to the Brooklyn Country Club.
Yep. Mhm. Which isn't terrible.
But that southern end is, is short, Matt?
Uh, well, I mean, if we added the purple, it would be, uh, about a hundred and four.
Alright, can you add it, can you put them all together and give us the three for the one thirty-third?
Six-two-two-one, there you go. Alright, six-three-four-eight, so you gotta arrange them about two-hundred, um, because I, District I, which is the, the gray area, is about a hundred over, and District J is about a hundred under.
Mm, so, what, what, which one is it?
So, I and J.
J is purple, yeah.
An I is gray?
We have to snag a little from the gray.
Just a little bit off at the bottom there.
Mm.
That road just cutting across.
Yep.
Greenfield Street.
Forty-one, fifty-eight, ninety-two. One-twenty-three, thirty-six. I don't, you wanna live in the same district as me or not?
We should, we should. My street is always split.
What street are you on?
Wait, what?
Hmm.
That's ninety-two, we wanna make this selected area purple here, please?
Yeah.
So, that gap is the golf course, right?
No, this area is, uh, the golf course is further up there.
What's that big gap there, I wonder?
Um, there is just like the Tungus Hill Park with the Pickle Ball Course and stuff.
Yeah.
Wow.
Nobody lives there.
Couple of big golf fields.
Mm. Can we see what it looks like, Matt, can you like?
Zoom out.
That's our funniest looking one so far, I think.
Those are, those are close enough.
Um, hold on one sec, let me just see what's on this block up here, which is sort of carved out, half of Waydough Road, that's nineteen, I don't, I would probably put that in just because it looks better, but.
Yep. Mhm.
Um, I'm not sure it makes any difference, the number. Alright, so. Do we wanna go that far north in that?
I don't know, I think Karen has a, I think you're right.
Yeah. I'm a little concerned about that.
I'm thinking about just folding the whole thing down south.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And that would be going back to where we were, huh?
And bringing it up a little, yeah, and bringing it up from the, the-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, instead of doing that ju- drop down and then.
Cut across.
Cut across, yeah.
So, you have to put back that section that we took out.
Yeah, I think that might make sense.
I agree with you. Matt, can you add in that knee, just, it'll, it'll, it'll send it over, leave, leave that purple for now.
Okay.
And then see that area where we had dumped in before, put, just add it back in, yeah, go, yep, yep, up to that edge, just.
Uh, right along that street.
Keep going, keep going.
All the way to the top.
Get it all the way to that other purple part, maybe, yeah, just take all, just take all of it, just make it way too big, and then we'll start subtracting.
Little orange.
All the way to the purple.
Yep, and then, yep, yep, yes, yes, yeah, now make that one big giant district, perfect.
Yep.
Sweet, and then, how many do we have to get out, and then I think we should work from, uh, from the top down.
The top part.
The top, down, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
That's it, and that just, uh, there're like two little sliver blocks over here, that I don't think have any people on them, but.
It's on a directional challenge. Okay, and then how many do we have to get out of there, Matt?
Since eight thousand seventy-nine, so we're wanting to get rid of seven hundred forty.
Or seventeen hundred forty?
Uh, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
Good time, good catch.
Alright, so just start right up there at the Bridgeport border and start coming down.
Mm.
Everything you have in that light, yeah, take all of that out.
Not all of it.
No, 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 not all of it.
No, and it's gotten that different color right there, that's what I meant.
So, that's six, this area with the golf course is six-twenty-one.
So, that comes out.
Yeah.
Uh, so let's see.
Oh, yeah, there you go, mm.
But now we're still eight hundred over?
Let's see, uh.
Eleven hundred.
How about that mountain in the middle?
Yeah.
Cut him off.
So, fifty-two twenty-two for the gray, and seventy-four fifty-eight for the purple.
So, we have to take something out of the purple now?
Yep.
Yeah, we need to drop about.
These people are not cooperating with us.
Twelve hundred.
Eleven hundred.
That, that purple peak there?
Yeah.
Something we could cut from that?
Yep, that, that chunk, that neighborhood chunk, maybe.
What happens if you cut it along Old Stratfield Road?
Right down the middle?
Mhm.
Yep.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Uh, so the north half is five hundred thirteen.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, take that.
Put that in the gray.
Yep.
Maybe do the next row then. What do you call them?
Uh.
That area, or do we wanna?
Yep, yep, no, I like that.
Mm.
Maybe go down those little, um.
Let's go right here. That definitely looks better.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, how much, we still have to add more back into the gray?
Yeah, we get the number for you there.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's like the little-
So, fifty-nine sixty-six, so we are, uh, three eighty off.
See that little corner up there, that little like little, yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright. Yeah.
The right.
Yep, looks like Massachusetts.
Oh, does it really, does it really have to dip down?
It looks like the, the, you know, Massachusetts, it looks like Massachusetts Street.
Just, uh.
Oh, you're serious, cause Massachusetts Street is right there.
It's right there, yeah, no, we're talking, no.
You meant the state?
Yeah.
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 Looks like the Cape on its side.
It does look like the Cape, yeah. Excuse me.
So, this area, if you make Melville the divider, would be four fifty-eight.
Uh-huh. Is that good?
Uh, it's probably, yeah, look, here.
A hundred over, maybe.
That is so much better.
Mm, yeah, that looks a lot better. How many do we have to put back?
Six-four-two-four, so we're, uh, about eighty off.
Still the way to the cat, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, we need more purple or more gray?
We, we have, uh, we need to draw eighty people out of gray.
Drop some purple.
Out of gray?
Out of gray.
Gray is eighty over.
So, what about that section, that, that, that end on the section that looks like the, that, right on the edge, that long one just going up?
The little, yeah, the long going out.
Here?
No, to the right, to the right.
All the way down the line?
The one he just took down.
Twenty-four.
The one he just took.
That one.
Yeah, that one.
That's one twenty-four.
That's a little more, right?
How about over there on the left, in the corner, near the green, over by green?
Yeah, those corners.
Yeah, like those.
That's fifty, twenty-eight, and thirty-seven.
How's that?
Do you want one of those, or?
Twenty-
How many do we need?
Eighty off.
Take, take those two corners.
Twenty-eight, thirty-seven.
Although, what, what street are we doing this to? Does anybody know what that is?
Fifty-eight, thirty-seven?
Um.
I know what it is, Jeanette.
My street.
Oh, really?
Oh, Jeanette.
You go right ahead, stop there.
Thank you, that's very generous of you.
Team player.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, that's, that looks lovely.
I just hate splitting that. I don't like that split, though.
All those neighborhoods gonna be split on four.
Why?
Yeah, I know.
There's nothing we can do about it.
I never had used, we've been split like that for a long time.
That's funny.
No, but those, those, those eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, those.
Yeah.
Where, which ones, what, what?
On the left of the others, you mean?
Yeah, right, we're Matt, right there, that's the, that's the split I don't like, but.
Where?
Mm.
That's where a lot of people are.
There's nothing we can do about it. That's Old Stratfield Road, right?
The whole thing over here, we get split.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's Old Stratfield Road.
Instead, go down Old Stratfield, split it.
That's perfect, it's a double yellow line.
Yeah, they should expect some level of.
That's a good point.
Okay, I can live with that, then, that's all, I see, I thought it was, so it's not really a neighborhood.
No, if you were going on Lennox Road, then I would, then I would feel bad, but you're, you're on going on, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always a-
It is on Lennox Road, right?
Oh, I thought you were on it, oh.
Yeah, Old Strat, this is the border with Old Stratfield here.
Yeah.
Oh, I hear you.
So, what if we took away some of that triangle on the right, to add, to add those guys?
How many are in those, that, one, two, three, four, five, those six blocks?
Uh, you want the ones on the right to move into the gray, or the ones on the left to move into the purple?
The one on the left to move into the purple.
Is that the right direction?
No.
No, it's gonna be higher, we're gonna have to take, but I just wanna keep, I, I don't like splitting that up, I'd rather split on the, and what's that street that you just, that's going all the way down, Matt? What road is that?
That's, Lennox is the one down the middle.
No, the one to the left.
That's, uh, Nats Highway.
That's perfect.
Yeah, that is good.
So, we're making that purple?
Please.
Maybe the one right above that, too, I know that means we have to take more out, though.
What, what's the cutoff, though?
Yeah, what is that street going across?
What's that street right now where that border is, Matt, what road is that?
Um, this, this west side border?
Nope, that one.
No, 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 up top, between gray and purple.
The peak.
That one, right there.
Alvin Street.
At what street?
And what's Alvin? What's the one right above that?
Bullard Street.
Okay. Not main streets, right?
We don't have a main.
No.
Cutoff that we could use.
If you go, go Nats Highway up to, uh, where it intersects with Melville, right, the high school.
Whether we're getting higher up, right? Uh.
Yeah, and then we're back to where we were before.
Yeah, maybe not. On the right, with that, that pointy, the cat ear on the right, um, how many are in there, I'm sorry?
Well, I see those all, make them gray.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, you are quite over, right?
Yeah, what's that?
Yep.
Take that out.
There goes the cat.
You just killed the cat, you killed the cat, Karen.
Which one lasted?
Watch the cat anyway, watch her better.
I'm seeing all sorts of images, I feel like it's psychedelic.
Like an ink blot test or something.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is sixty-six sixty-five, two hundred, the gray is two hundred over.
Over, okay.
Gray is two hundred over, how about that?
What's that big block?
That little purple jet, that, can you take that out?
Or you need?
No, we need to take that out.
We need to add the purple.
We need to add to the purple.
Oh, 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 always put back in.
What about right in the middle, that?
That big thing?
That, that's five hundred.
And how many do we need?
No, go to the right.
That other big thing?
That one, that one.
Two forty-seven.
Add that one back in?
Mm.
You want that one, or you want this one on the other side of Villa?
No, I like that, uh, uh.
No, go in the middle, I like, yeah.
Yeah, and what is that, Melville?
What's the cross street?
What is that?
Is that Melville still?
Two forty-seven, uh.
Yeah, that's Melville above it, which is a good.
That's Melville, Karen?
Yeah, the one.
And then what are the left and right streets?
Um.
Do you like my directions?
Uh, Berkeley and, uh, Villa and Nordstrand, which is the, um.
Yeah, I think we gotta add that seventy-six, that block back in and find something, only cause that.
Is that a neighborhood?
How does it look now, Matt?
Number-wise, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, if you don't have any stray purple ones around.
Mm.
Stray purples, those are cats.
Sixty-three forty.
Wow, that's great, and which one, the, the gray?
The purple is sixty-three forty, but then the other one will probably be way similar.
Yeah, must be.
They're both sixty-three forty.
Oh, that's great. Yay, look what we did.
Okay, so, we have ten districts drawn, right?
Yeah, now, let me just put the numbers in here, um, sixty-three forty, sixty-three forty, so, ten and a half percent, ten point five-two, um, District B in the hundred thirty-fourth is light by like a hundred fifty to two hundred.
Please. Much.
Um, so if you wanna get under ten percent, uh, you have to, I was gonna, I was talking about Tal a little bit before, um, one thing-
We're looking at B, right?
At B, yeah. One thing that, um, you asked me to do at the last meeting that I did not do correctly, was you said you wanted cross highway as the border between the, the two districts in the Greenfield Hill area.
Okay.
Uh, and I made the Merritt Parkway, so cross highway is like north of, the Merritt Parkway, right, uh.
South, south of.
Well, south for most of it, but there's like a couple blocks north of the Merritt Parkway that I think if you were to add.
Can you move that?
You wanna see it?
Yeah, it's fucking right here.
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, just drop that right down.
Right down to there.
On the list.
How many people are in there, how many do you have to get out?
Uh, let's see, if we were to. If we were to add those two blocks, which are a hundred and three. Would be at, uh, eight point nine percent.
Nice.
Oh, good.
So we're in.
Yeah.
So, but, I mean, I don't wanna just like make that change without saying it, but that was one I thought that was like.
No, that doesn't make sense.
Can we do the whole thing now?
We did arrange it like. What's that?
Can you show us the whole?
Yeah, let me just, uh...
Gotta call it again.
Mm.
And so we're at E F G, so this is H, I, and J we just drew, correct?
That's, uh, that's right.
Okay.
Now, you could give them numbers.
Uh, I'll give them numbers when we're done.
People get like emotionally attached to the numbers.
Yeah, Karen's in my district.
Oh, yeah. I am?
I used to be seven, that's my, my, my personal email is hal@rtmseven.
Oh, that's right. That's right, yeah.
So five, seven, eight, three. Five, nine, three, five. There we go, so now you're at eight point nine percent.
Great.
Uh, so you wanted the whole...
Please.
That's ten.
That's ten. Can you put the letters in them?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's good. Uh, let me save it as it's, I think that's pretty great.
Yeah, please.
Good idea. Yeah.
Is anybody completely unhappy with what they see there?
That's a priority.
Well, based upon the numbers, we can't really be unhappy, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if, if it got one.
You could trade one block for another one type of stuff, you know.
Right, but I mean, I, I mean, you know, the only things that I don't like is that little bit of green that's going up into the darker orange, but, you know, it's almost like that Michigan thing going on with those three districts right there, but I don't think we have much of a choice with that section.
Right.
I don't like it, to be honest with you, at all, but you, it's because you're insisting that the university has to stay together.
What don't you like about it, what's?
Just to his point, that little corner, you know, like you should dump in that dark green into the light green.
Oh. Mm.
'Cause you're really, talk about you're isolating that neighbor, that, I, that neighborhood is just...
Right, that's the only reason.
Getting completely cut off from everybody, 'cause that's not a neighborhood, that, that, this is woods. Here, so like these people are com- like, there's no connection here, like, this neighborhood, if you're talking about neighborhoods, belongs in here.
Mm.
So which one are you talking, the purple one?
'Cause this is, you can't, you can't drive from here to here, this is woods.
Mm.
But there's, I don't know how you're gonna do it without.
So if we, if we drew the line here and moved that up.
Without. No, no, you can't, 'cause that, that's the one thirty-fourth, this is the one thirty-sixth.
Oh, is that the state line?
Yeah.
Oh, so we don't have a choice, we have to do that on the state line.
So that, uh, the only way to do it is, is you can't do it, like, I would like to send this in here.
Right.
Fairfield U is only in, right now, it's, it's in, um, the same area that we call like the Anqua, or the, the, you know, the Fairfield Bluffo.
Which one are you talking, Pam? The Drake line?
I'd like to put corn, I'd like to put Carroll, Lawrence, Woodsen, and College Park back into this, into F.
Right, that, that dark green.
And, and send Hanford and...
Dark green into the light green.
And send Hanford in, keep it in G.
That's all kind of touching the university in a way.
Well, let me select one district, one, one, one single census block and show you why it's, the, the challenge of dividing that neighborhood, is that this area that's selected is a single block.
I know.
So we can just kinda take half of it?
Yeah, no, I know.
But if you wanna try, like, you know, we do, we say this is like draft one, and you wanna try to move this dark green area into this, like, I don't know, the Duck Farm area over here, um, you know, we could give it a shake.
But even if you took that area now, that's where your mouse is, and turned that into the lighter green?
Yeah. So that's seven hundred and three people up here.
Okay.
And so, if we wanted to add that to the green, we'd, I'd need to find about seven hundred off.
But can we take the, we have to take it out of that green now, right, and can, can we take it out of the top half of, of what you now have as A?
No, it's, it's the one thirty-fourth.
No, you can't, you can't touch it, you can't move A between A and.
You can't. This is it, 'cause you're, you're hamstringing everything on the fact that you will refuse to cut the university.
Right, but this isn't the university.
No, that's, you, you can't do anything with that, you need to keep that, this is, that's another, this is a different state line.
So this is the state line?
Yeah.
And you want these to be with those, is that it?
We want this in here, right?
If we could.
That's what I'd like to see too, but then we need to take more out of here.
Nope, you can't.
Which, right, and that's the problem, is because of where the state line is at.
It's because of this insistence that we not split the university, which I have to tell you, I completely disagree with, it's just, it, they don't vote, first of all, I know they need representation, but they don't vote. And you're really, once you subtract it out, you're leaving District F with four thousand people in it, 'cause there's two thousand people in the university. So really, that district has four thousand voters, 'cause let's be honest, they don't vote locally.
Could, would it screw things up if the, the east side of F went into G, if we did that, or did you ju- I, I didn't really understand what you're showing.
So, um, so let me sort of explain what you would do if you wanted to do that, so if you wanted to move this dark green area that I'll select it here just for demonstration sake, that has seven hundred and three people.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're gonna move seven hundred and three more people into the light, the, the sort of medium tone green.
Mm-hmm.
You need to find about seven hundred, now, I'll, I'll say, you have more flexibility, because your smallest districts are all in Hundred Thirty-Fourth, and your largest ones are all in Hundred Thirty-Third, so you have a range of about a hundred to two hundred, where you could have the district to be larger or smaller in the Hundred Thirty-Second, right? Because you're only worried about the largest district and the smallest district to get to your ten percent, but everything in the Hundred Thirty-Second is in between those.
Right.
Right, so you could take three hundred people out of one of these districts in the Hundred Thirty-Second, and you would still be fine, you wouldn't mess with your, your range.
Can you show us?
So can I, so can you dump in that corner in F?
Yeah, let me, let me do that real quick here, uh...
So right now, we're moving this into here.
Yeah.
And then we gotta pull.
Well, we might not have to do anything, 'cause he said in the Hundred Thirty-Second we have play.
Mm.
Here we go, one census block at a time.
Mm. Can I see this, I see sure, drop one, thank you.
Those are the numbers based on what Matt sent us from December.
And that's just the current district?
That's the way it looks right now, 'cause there really doesn't mean anything.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
So we have to get every district over fifty-seven, eighty-one.
Okay. Doesn't smell in here after a while.
After a while?
It doesn't after a while.
Like your nose is.
Like you're just coming into it?
Getting sucked into it.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes. Can't open the windows, we'll turn on the AC.
Your tax dollars at work.
Yeah.
He's adding the numbers up, right?
All right, this.
Now you didn't go that way, that's the problem.
Is, uh, it changes the numbers a little bit, um, but you unify this, this area on top here, uh, and what you drop out of this area that we're calling, uh, District, uh, F, right? Um, is... Uh, like Henderson Road, Somerset.
I, I didn't wanna drop, I didn't wanna drop anything, Matt, that's not what I asked you to do, all I asked.
Yeah, I was just saying you can't do it unless you drop.
I, 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 all I wanted to do was put that back in.
Where's Henderson, that's part of.
Then you'd be seven hundred over, right?
I know, we said that, I thought you were just adding up all the numbers to tell us what the differences of the districts were.
All right, so, and so that means we gotta go back to the saved, where we were before. Right where we had the ten.
What about putting the university in the beach area, considering they have unified, uh, common?
I don't think it can reach the beach.
What's that?
I think if you drew a straight line from the university, you'd have to, you'd have to many people.
They have to be contiguous.
No, 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 to literally carve out the university.
Can't.
What, where does it say, I know that was one of our things, was to do it contiguous, but does it say that, that it must be contiguous?
No.
So what if you, what if we did do that? What if we carved out the beach area and gave it down to the beach rep district?
The university.
What if we, the university area and gave it to the beach reps? Because that's where the.
I think the beach reps really, it makes sense to be in these communities, that the university isn't part of the beach, you know, that's a different neighborhood. So I, I wouldn't really, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Except that the university in the beach area sort of are common, sort of common issues that come up, that the beach reps.
Like what if you put Fairfield Beach Road back in E and put the university in E?
Well, you have three thousand too many people in E, plus whatever, you know.
I know, and then go, and then take F and take that northern corner down into Southport and con- connect it that way.
Uh, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever you want, but I guess, uh, you could put what you're thinking on a sheet of paper, so I could like load it into the.
Like what if you made C F the way it is right now? What if you made that a butterfly on the river with E?
Yeah, you're gonna have to get up and demonstrate that.
Yeah.
On, maybe on math screen.
I'm very against the idea of university being in the beach area.
All right, well then why don't we flip it into G and we withdraw, and redraw that way?
And pull some of G into F. If this is mainly because of E.
So can you, can you highlight the university area for me, Matt, please?
Right below the horseshoe. See the little horseshoe there?
Either that, or split the university. What is the real problem with splitting the university in order to keep people who are full-time residents together?
I agree.
That, I mean, that's really, we're, we're working because I'm sorry it makes more work for the registrar's office, but I mean...
It's not really about more work, right, like, I guess the concern is students move within the campus all the time, right? Like, you could register them in September, in October, they live in a different dorm, and so, the concern is not just sort of the additional work, we already printed the special voter registration card to figure out what dorm they're in and all this stuff. But my concern, uh, primarily, is that if you have an election that's close, then people are gonna climb all over that list and go, does this guy live in that dorm, he voted, my favorite candidate lost by three votes? And then, like, you know, that uncertainty that comes about from, like, the students moving within the campus, which is basically.
I think that's a lot, I think that's a lot of what if, when we're breaking up residents who live here full-time.
Are we just concerned about these few streets?
Yeah, I would like, yeah, I would like to try and figure out how to do that for full-time residents, and the, my other thing is too, you have two thousand people in this block.
Who unlikely are not gonna.
Who don't vote.
Well, that's a problem for everybody in every district, yeah.
Well, but you, but you know that you have that in that whole section, you know that.
So you're, so your suggestion.
You said last meeting, three people probably vote for an R, in an RTM, right?
So your suggestion is to take the university, move it out of G, and move it to F?
Or, or split it, or split it, so that, so the one district is, one, yeah, make more room in F, there, there's, there's, split it.
Make more room, make more room in F.
Then we could take the little Michigan horseshoe out.
Yes, and then just put it in F, and, you know, your problem solved.
All right, Matt, can you split the university down the middle for us and then move it over?
Or if there's a way to do it, or if there's a way.
I think that, that's one of the few things they really ask for, though.
Well, I'm more concerned about the residence of Fairfield.
I, I agree. But they'll survive if they're in different districts, and other groups are in different areas.
I mean, I guess the.
Where's the lea- where are the most of the dorms that you could, there's a, you could carve up that university area in, in a way that's least destructive for you.
They're north and south, both of them, it's a north-south thing.
Yeah.
So the university is the dark green?
No, uh...
No.
No.
Can you show me the university area, please, just as that block?
It's with this little, follow it like right up in here.
Between North Benson and Roundhill. Um, I mean, we have played a few areas, right, where neighborhoods are split, like even the beach area.
If you could just go ahead and do that, please.
So, you know, I guess the, the concern here is you want the people who live on Cynthia Drive and on Orchard Hill Drive to be in the same place as the people on Henderson Road and Somerset.
No, I want that ca- I want that corner that you moved in, that was seven hundred people, that we talked about before. And split the university area, I don't care if you go north, south, east, west, I mean, one of them's dull in the business school, carve that out, I mean, no, there's no dorms in there.
Can I just ask you, please just draw it on a, a map, 'cause I really don't understand what you want, so if you can put it on a sheet of paper, I will put it in the computer and tell you the population.
Well, what do you, what is the easiest for you, is what I'm asking you.
You're trying to get this, you're trying to get this into F, right?
So you put, but you put this back, right, you put that back in F, this corner, that's what I want.
Okay, so, on the paper with the pen, so I can just translate like what you think these four districts should be, how they should be divided?
Just break up this line right from that.
I, I, can you please just put it on a sheet of paper?
Gimme a, gimme a thing.
You have paper, you have.
I don't wanna talk to you.
Draw him.
And then here, and here, and then, that, that's it, just those in here.
So, where is the boundary with, so?
Everything is the same except for that?
Yeah.
There were seven hundred and something people there.
So, you're gonna?
And then wherever, and then I'll take you, I'll take your advice on whatever, wherever the best way to do inherent.
Eighteen hundred on the right. There is no best way, if you divide the university, there is no best way, that is the, the one thing that we said, please do not do this one thing.
All right, well, Jim, what about just around this circle?
No, I mean, if you wanna do it, you, you, you guys have the power in it.
Well, how do we see how it, how it, I wanna see how it looks, Matt.
Can, can we be a little bit more civil, please?
Yeah.
Everybody, please?
She's asked him four times.
I know.
I know, but I said, please just draw the four districts that you like on a map.
I just did.
You, you drew, you drew one line.
She wants you to move that one section over and take the university out, see what happens.
What about if we just pull in Carroll, like this part?
Too many people.
This, this little part here, that one seventeen, eighty-four, sixty-two, I mean, without this part, just the... You know what I mean? Just this, like, what about that?
That, that's, that's what I asked for.
'Cause that's not seven hundred people, right, or am I reading it wrong?
Uh, that is... Sixty, one forty.
Two fifty?
Forty-three. How many, yeah, it's.
Like two fifty?
That's a hundred and ten plus two fifty, which is three hundred and sixty.
Mm.
So what district is there for the university going in?
Where is it now, G, or F, it's in F?
It's an F.
It's an F.
You're bringing in G.
I think, I mean, we're, what we're just saying is, what about if you just keep it where it is, but just pull in the Carroll Road? but just pull in the Carroll Road? Um, 'cause you had said it was seven hundred more, but I think-
Yeah, it's kind of-
Really? It looks like it would be like-
Yeah, there's, yeah, it's, it's one sev- yeah, that whole Carroll Road, it's almost eight hundred people altogether, isn't it?
How is it eight hundred? Well, let me show you.
Here, Karen, look at this. It's the map that I gave you, 'cause the numbers are on it.
I'm looking at this with the numbers on it.
Oh, 'cause this is-
Yeah.
It's about eight hundred.
See, I don't, I don't, I don't, I think it's just, um, just this part here. I think, I think it's about eight hundred.
It's two sixty plus one seventy-seven, so it'd be six thirty-three.
You're looking at the one on the part of the right of, on the road two, Carroll Road?
What am I missing? 'Cause I see one seventy-seven plus eighty-six plus sixty-three.
Where is it?
Right, you mean the Carroll Road.
That's what I'm thinking.
This right here, right?
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
'Cause you got two fifty right next to that Carroll Road, that's right in here, right on-
So leave, so leave that there.
Yeah.
Karen, you know it, you, you-
Or, or straight down Carroll Road?
Yeah.
That's a lot less than seven hundred.
It's sixty-three, eighty-six, one seventy-seven.
Yeah, it's one forty and one seventy, it's three hundred and change, three ten. Can you leave the two fifty-nine in there?
Yeah, it, it splits there right now anyway, I think.
Yes. So Karen, just have them come right down Carroll Road, right?
Yeah, he's getting stuff ready here.
Yep.
Yeah, just, the, this-
Just this curve, just this part.
With the inside?
Yep.
Do you want College Park Drive, where it connects with Carroll Road to be the border?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Sure. I think that was your, it was actually-
No, it's, uh- Thank you.
Uh, and so university, we're moving into green?
No, no, leave it big.
Leave it, leave everything where it is, right?
Have the numbers seen, then.
Alright, so G is, uh, white, and F is heavy, so, uh, correct, twelve point seven.
Twelve, sorry.
Okay, so, we have, we have to move out of F into G. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, G is the red, no, G is the green?
Yeah.
That we're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
And that's just to the, the right?
Yeah, and the only border they share is Carroll Road.
Mm. So we'd have to pick something from another-
There's, there's, there's nothing you can do. I, I, I looked at this map. There's absolutely nothing you can do because of the insistence on Fairfield U. Can you help with this?
There's, there's, you have almost infinite opportunities, right? Like, you're, you're choosing a district, right, that is this north-south shape, uh, and you would like, um, you know, basically, like, you know, you don't care about having the university, but you wanna have the people north of the university and the people west of, like, Mosswood and Elkhorn.
Though, though, if you can keep that one section intact, then you literally have kept neighborhoods in that area together. And it's, it's looking like it can't be done.
Well, let's keep trying.
Which is, which is fine, it's just, it's because we refuse to break up the university.
But there must be solutions, so let's keep trying.
Can I just ask something here? I think that in fourteen, Matt, isn't that when we had to, last time?
They grew the state rep line.
Make it into two, well, the state line-
Right, the state rep.
State rep lines are really what's the problem.
Yeah.
I mean, but, it seems to me we were forced to do it last time, not-
But now we don't have to.
Alright, so, what we're talking about right now is the lime green area is, is how many of-
He won't do it.
Three hundred.
Well, let's go with that.
Let's just, let's just-
Three hundred.
Comparing. Let's see if we can figure it out before we insist on that, 'cause that's very important to them, if we do it.
Right, well, so you need to find three hundreds anywhere in the gray that you're willing to take out.
Right.
So-
And move it to the green.
You can't, you can't move three hundred from gray into green, because gray and the green area up here, which is the only place that they touch, is like, you know, you can't, like, the whole purpose was to take this area from the green and put it into the gray. So you can't put the gray back into the green, 'cause that was the one thing that Pam wanted, right? So you have to find another area on the border of F, which is the gray area, and say, okay, we wanna remove it, right, uh, three hundred people or so. I had done the other side of Sturgis Road, right? That, that was, you know, if you move west of Sturgis, uh, into the same area that is, um, like, Southport, essentially, then you have, you solve that problem, right? You can give District F the entire area north of the university. If you trade it for this area that's up to the, uh, west of Sturgis, yeah. Actually, uh, here-
Let me watch the map, hold on.
Yeah, I, I don't need to, you can, you don't need to leave, 'cause it's, it's like, oh, that was-
I didn't wanna be looking over your shoulder, 'cause I didn't wanna make you uncomfortable, so I just can go over here.
So if you make Sturgis the border, then you actually get more people up north than Pam asked for it now.
I still think that's better than what we had.
Wait, so then where do you put those people in G? No, wait, you take away from, and then, and then G?
So North Benson is the border, all the way north to south between F and G, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you get all of, like, so you could either take these Sturgis people and move them in with Southport, or you could take the, what you might call it, the Mosswood people, and put them in with the beach area.
So do you have to, though, shift everything up to G so it catches up then, or?
Yeah, G, G, the border between, uh, G and D, then, uh, changes a little bit over by, like, Vermont and New Hampshire.
Right, let's leave it.
Can I see it the way it is? Are we good with what you have up there now? Are we good with the numbers the way they are right there on that map?
No, we have a little too.
The, what, what's on the map now is that column two.
Okay, and how close are we?
That is, that's numerically fine.
Okay.
That's including the, the little area you moved over for Pam?
Yeah, the north area is in, and west of Sturgis moves down-
No, no, don't take the west, just put the, go do what you did. Leave it, leave it alone. Ta- undo the Carroll Street and leave, leave it alone.
Do you want your original draft one?
Yep, just leave it alone.
You don't like that one better? Pam?
No, I don't.
I was just asking.
And you, the alternative that you could do, I mean, just within your sort of range of things, you could say, we want, uh, you know, we have a couple of different ones, and we want you to choose between them. If you want, the committee wants to refer a couple of options, you certainly could.
No.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah.
Absolutely not. We don't want to debate on the floor on which one we're gonna go with.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is where we ended up twenty minutes ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
I'll make the color.
My watch. One tiny block. Thank you. I put the median of the Merritt Parkway in the wrong.
Um, so I guess, what do you, now that we have this, uh, what do you need in terms of, like, is, like, printed to review, or like, what's the?
Well, it's eight-thirty now. We'd like to be done by nine o'clock. So, again, I'll ask, is this the place to, to, to go with the ten districts?
For now, the, the next layer is you have to put the political overlay on it.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, if he could do that.
You want, like, the state reps in?
Uh, no, well-
Registered voters.
Registered voters by party on these.
Oh, you wanna know, like, the, the registration by party?
Yes.
Yeah, I, well, I could do that while we're sitting here.
What I'd also like to do is, is send that home with us, too.
Yeah.
So we can look at that.
Uh, do you want total DRU?
Yeah, yes, please.
Yes, please.
And make sure you break it out for the university.
What do you mean?
Make sure their census blocks have red, 'cause the one that he did for us did not have that.
Oh, oh, 'cause we, um, like, while the census bureau says, okay, this dorm and this dorm and this dorm each have this population because they're on this street within the campus, we only have, like, Dolan Hall is like one area, and the rest of it is all ten seventy-three. So, like, we don't have registration by dorm, 'cause we just are tracking whether they're in Dolan Hall or-
I think you're just talking about as a whole, what is the university break?
Yeah, so just what, the color for the university is, is like a single block at ten seventy-three, like, which is sort of like in the middle, as you're looking at that sort of color coding thing.
But you have the breakout of, of the registered parties within the university.
That's right, yeah.
That's what you're looking for.
Yeah, thank you.
So, A, uh, four, four, and this is, uh, numbers as of, um, uh, January. Four forty-two, total. Fourteen forty-seven, B, twelve forty-two, R.
Can you give those to me again?
Uh, yeah, I'm also putting it on a spreadsheet, if you can, if you don't, I mean, you can handwrite them all, but-
Well, you're just gonna, I, I'm hoping you'll email this all out, and I'll edit it, everybody, but just so we can have a basic idea.
I'll put it on the screen.
Yeah, so everybody who's watching at home can see it.
So the balance is unaffiliated, I guess?
That's right, yeah. So, ooh. Uh, B is four-two-five-seven registered, uh, twelve seventy-two Democrat, twelve ninety-one Republican. Publicity District there. C is three-five-one-two registered, ten thirty-four Democrat, nine forty Republican. Uh, D, four-two-oh-six. Uh, total, fourteen seventy Democrat, ten fourteen Republican. E- Four-eight-oh-seven registered, seventeen-fifteen Democrat, eleven-fourteen Republican.
Eleven-fourteen?
Seventeen-fifteen and eleven-fourteen.
F is three-thousand-six registered, nine-oh-nine D, eight-twenty-seven R. G is four-three-five-one, total, fourteen forty-four D, ten forty-two R. H, four-seven-oh-six, total, eighteen fifty-nine D, nine-five-five R. I, four-three-six-two, seventeen forty D, eight sixty-one R. J is three-seven-five-seven, total, twelve-sixty-three-five B, six ninety-two R.
Matt, can you give me A again, please?
What, what?
A.
Uh, four forty-two, total, fourteen forty-seven D, twelve forty-two R.
What was the total registered in B?
Four-two-five-seven.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Can you leave that up there, Matt?
I can also share this in the computer.
I'm just gonna wait for the email to come in. Okay, so... My suggestion would be is we call it a night here. We are skip for our next meeting.
Next week, right?
To be next Tuesday, the twenty-second. So, that gives us seven days to go through this stuff and we can come back here. If everybody's comfortable with the districts the way they're drawn, then we can start talking about the red...
Do we wanna make it into an ordinance for you between now and then?
No.
Uh, we gotta wait and make sure that...
There's a lot more work that's gotta go into it.
Can you send us the map broken out, red and blue?
Uh, you mean, like, block by block?
Yes, please.
You want, and you want, so you want these borders with sort of red and blue block in the middle?
Yeah, like that one you did for us in the, in your presentation.
If you could put that together for me in a PDF and, so, I would like, if it's possible, the whole map with the numbers, and then if you could give us each of the districts... Each one of the ten with the breakdowns on it, I think it would be easier than trying to look at the whole map. What do you guys think? So, if we get these broken out in red and blue for A through J?
We'll do both. Do the whole thing, do the whole thing, yeah, and then what you did this was incredibly helpful, yes.
And then these. Does that make sense for you, Matt?
Uh, I, I was, I was...
These that you did for us, these are the, the first seven that we drew? If you could give us these, again, with the red and blues on top of them individually, ten, eight individuals plus one full map. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to see? I don't wanna call it homework, but it's, it's what it is.
Hopefully, we can vote on it next week. That would be awesome.
Matt, how long would it take you guys to put together the ordinance?
Um, well, most towns just say, you know, add, depict it on such and such a map, label this on file to town clerk as a receipt.
Except I think we talked about the fact that we use meets and bounds.
Right.
We don't have to.
Want to spend a bunch of time doing that, you can, you know, I just, uh...
You don't have to do it. The engineering department does it for us.
Okay, if you like.
So, how fast do they do it, you know?
I mean, with Juliana, it did it, and she no longer works for the town, so, uh, I would not wanna speculate on what they would do for you.
They, they, they have somebody there?
I think that we did it last time so that we, like, gave the direction to set it in meets and bounds. Let me go back and look and see how we did it, because we didn't need to have the meets and bounds.
Right, we don't, right, right, we don't have to have it, but...
Oh, you don't, you don't have to wait on it.
We can vote on it without that, I believe.
Right. So, if we, i- if we got this done at the next meeting... We could do it on the twen- we could vote on it on the, the ordinance on the twenty-ninth.
Or the same meeting, right, potentially?
Potentially, but at the worst case, we could go one week later...
Yeah. Yeah.
And still make the April RTM meeting, which is what I'm hoping for.
Yeah.
But we need to take a look at this, and I think we need to spend some time with the political boundaries and seeing where we are and what we can do to make this as fair as possible, based on the numbers. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Matt, so you'll send us the ma- you'll send me the maps. I'll send them out to the committee. We'll look at the overlays and we'll come back and see where we are next week and see if we can put this thing to bed. Anybody have anything else?
No.
No.
Either of you have anything? Matt?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, very much. Well done.